Good afternoon everybody and welcome to this special meeting of the Economies and Neighbourhood Scrutiny Panel. I hope you can all hear me okay here and also all those watching via YouTube today. I hope this will be a productive and positive meeting today. I'm councillor Harper Upple and I'm the lead member of the Economies and Neighbourhood Scrutiny Panel and I'll be chairing today's meeting. Please be aware this meeting is being webcast and before we commence the meeting, I would like to request that those of you with mobile phones, please switch them off or put them on silent to minimise any disruptions of the proceedings. For those who are not familiar with the arrangements, can I first introduce you to the various parties that will be involved in this process? So in front of me in the centre, in the first two rows are the panel members. We are the ones who will be considering all the evidence that is presented here today and making a recommendation at the end of the meeting. We've got Jodie Harris and Lee Webb and there are officers from the Democracy Service and they'll be supporting the panel during the meeting today. Towards the back of it, she's just stepped out, we have got two other officers from the Democracy Service, Helen Kilroy and Nicholas Sylvester, they'll be sat towards the back of the room and they're here to help us with califying any queries. We've also got Sam Lawton, Head of Governance, who's also in the meeting, who's just stepped out as well, but we sat on the other side of the room as well and again can help with any queries. Got Philip here who's helping with all the digital aspects, so thank you Philip as well. To the left of me on the first two rows are the signatories to the calling. They're here to provide evidence and answer questions on those areas of the calling that the panel is focusing on. We've also got some members of the public and other councillors who will also be speaking to this item. To my right is councillor McBride, who is the Cabinet Member with the responsibility for regeneration. He's here to answer the panel's questions and provide evidence as the decision maker. He's also supported by a number of officers also sat on the right hand side. The aim of the Economy and Neighbourhood Scrutiny Panel is to consider very carefully issues raised by the notice of calling by listening to the views and supporting evidence from the signatories to the calling, the council decision makers, councillors of the authority and members of the public. In terms of the arrangements for the meeting, we'll be following a timetable which has been handed out. We've structured the meeting to try and allow sufficient time and opportunity for the panel to hear the breadth of relevant evidence on issues raised in the calling. The panel members will hear all perspectives to assist them in coming to a balanced view and also inform their decisions. I would like to remind everyone that we're looking to conduct a fair and responsible review wherever possible and I would like people to adhere to the time allocated to address the scrutiny panel. I realise this is a very passionate issue for a number of people, but we would ask that everyone behaves in respectful way so the panel can hear from all parties and within the timescales allocated. If you're speaking, please try not to repeat points which have been raised by other speakers. Can I also remind everyone that we're here to specifically review three areas raised in the notice to call in and these focus on relevant considerations, clarity and options. These are listed in the papers that have been provided publicly to not only panel members but that are available to the public as well. And people addressing the panel will need to focus on these three areas. I would also wish to stress to all of you present here today that the scrutiny panel does not have the power to overturn the cabinet decision. However, after taking account of all the relevant evidence that has been presented today, the panel may recommend that the cabinet consider making amendments to this decision. It will be up to cabinet to decide whether it wishes to accept the scrutiny panel's recommendations. Finally, I want to emphasise that scrutiny is here today to provide an independent review of the decision. Whatever outcome the panel reaches today, I wish to assure everyone that the members of this panel have not prejudged their conclusion and will reach a decision based solely on the balance of facts as they've been presented today. Okay, so we're going to move on to the agenda. I just wanted to spend a bit of time just outlining the process to everyone so people were clear what was happening and I thank both my colleagues here who helped with that today, so thank you both. So we're going to move on to the membership of the committee. So I've already mentioned I'm Harper, I'm the Chair. Yusra?
Councillor Yusra Singh at Lewis Ward.
Liz?
Councillor Liz May, Chair of Scrutiny.
Councillor Andrew Pinnock, substitute on this occasion, councillor for Cleckleydon.
Councillor Adam Gregg, again a substitute councillor for Lindley, thank you.
Councillor Gwen Low, councillor for Batley West.
Andrew Bird, Co-op T.
Thank you members. We've also received apologies from Chris Friend who is a Co-op T. Do we have any interest to declare panel members? Yusra?
Yeah, I have interest to declare. I'm on the West Yorkshire Combined Authority Transport Committee.
Thank you. I should also declare my interest. I'm a ward member that's affected partly by this scheme as an Ashborough ward member. I have met with some residents as part of this, as part of the consultation process. So we've met with residents at Oak Road and we've also met with cabinet members and the leader of the council as a ward member as well about the scheme previously. Okay, admissions?
Sorry Chair, yeah, can I declare then that I have an interest being a member of the West Yorkshire Combined Authority Transport Committee. Sorry, for the viewing members, I'm Martin Bolt, I'm a councillor for Merfield. The scheme also impacts on my ward. I've reviewed the scheme with yourself as a member of the scrutiny panel and I also have met residents of Oak Road and others to discuss this with them.
Thank you councillor Bart, thank you for that. The meeting is held in public today. There will be, when we go to deliberate as a panel, we will go into private for that part, but the rest of the meeting is held in public and we will obviously come back and say what decision we've made as well. We'll say that publicly. Okay, so I think that's all those bits done and we're going to move to the meat of the item now, which is the calling of the cabinet decision in relation to the A62 to Cooper Bridge corridor improvement scheme. As I've said previously, we're focusing on the decision that was taken by cabinet on the 12th of October 2021 and the calling is on three items: relevant considerations, clarity and options. So it's those three items that we are specifically looking at. I'm just going to quickly move to my timetable. So the first section we're going to move on to is the lead signatory statement. I understand this will be councillor Bolt. So I will ask councillor Bolt to outline the reasons for calling the decision made by cabinet and we'll ask him to focus on the three points that the calling was requested on. You have five minutes to speak. Sorry, I'm trying to, I've got it wrong. You've got 20 minutes, up to 20 minutes to speak. We are going to use a clock over here and we'll perhaps give you, we can't use that one unfortunately, but when it gets round to 15 minutes, is that okay? If I let you know we're at 15 minutes. Okay, off you go.
Thank you Chair, thanks for that. And I'd like to start by thanking councillors Aidan, Patrick, Armour and Firth for their support in bringing this matter today. The calling was done at fairly short notice as you remember Chair and we had about four hours to complete all the paperwork. So I'm grateful to colleagues and officers for their assistance. At the cabinet meeting which considered this, I raised 18 separate points and three times asked for them to be answered. As without answers, how can the cabinet reach a reasoned decision? Especially when some cabinet members admitted having concerns about the project and councillor McBride himself is on record admitting it had flaws and was imperfect. Yourself and the other ward members asked questions, as did residents. I'm sure the panel have watched the webcast, so you'll have seen all this and therefore the first premise of the call that relevant considerations were not addressed, I believe, is proven. Without answering questions and without dismissing the 18 separate questions I raised and others, how can the cabinet reach a reasoned decision? Because otherwise, all they're doing is basing their decision on matters they have in the report prepared before they were questioned. I'll further expand on that and other points as valid reasons. And one of those is the failure to consider and address an accepted motion of this council. Failure to demonstrate why the scheme put to cabinet, which on the presentation received on the day and I believe in the pack today, if we see it later, is labelled Option 30. When it was presented to cabinet, it was referred to as Plan B. Why do the new roadworks have to be done on the existing road infrastructure at Cooper Bridge, therefore causing congestion and adversely impacting air quality of the area, contrary to council and West Yorkshire policy? Cabinet makes the decision on the premise of shared responsibility, so each member has to be in possession of sufficient facts to satisfy themselves. The webcast clearly shows that some had concerns and without hearing answers to how they were resolved, how could they vote in an informed manner? As many will be aware, three years ago this week, a motion was approved by the whole council. The terms of that specifically said an impact assessment should be carried out for the village of Flockton and the B618 road which serves it from Bradley. Starts off as Combridge Road and changes name many times. Impact from this from both the North Kirklees Orbital Road, for which this scheme shows no consideration or any potential linkage, and the Cooper Bridge scheme, which clearly it does. There was no mention of this in the cabinet report, therefore members could not take into account when making the decision and the decision was therefore based on flawed information. Also, in January 2019, the cabinet members along with many others were signatories to and fully supportive. Has the webcast gone Chair?
It seems to be working fine on the other side, but let, we'll just confirm that Martin. We'll just pause for a minute because we're going to make sure that's working.
Thanks for take two.
I'll just, apologies if anyone's watching online, we had a slight pause because of some technical issues, so we're going to let Martin continue. Go ahead.
Thanks Chair. Also, in 2019, the cabinet members were signatory to and fully supportive of a motion to council declaring a climate emergency, included in which demanded the production of environmental impact reports on projects and policies and working with other authorities to reduce emissions, which would reasonably demand that before taking a decision such as this, they have in front of them evidence and data showing they are achieving the objectives of the motion and declaration. Otherwise colleagues, what purpose and practical benefit is there for the many motions we debate and pass at council? Are they meaningful or just another contributor to emissions and global warmings if they're not referred to? With bear in mind the scheme objectives, which in approving the report, cabinet should have ensured were clearly met and able to be measured as such, to relieve congestion, improve journey time including buses, contribute to the economic and housing growth, improve road safety, improve active travel facilities and encourage more use and to support the improvement of air quality, for which we must remember that in Bradley there is an air quality management area, therefore subject to monitoring and mitigation. And crucially, they should now ensure clear adherence to West Yorkshire and mayoral policies such as the carbon reduction pathway. Mayor Brabin has clearly said schemes which do not may see their funding withdrawn. There is no section in the cabinet report to show how it will achieve carbon reduction or comply with those mayoral dictates on space reallocation and modal shift. A reminder that those targets are to reduce private car travel by at least 21%, increase travel by walking by 78%, increase travel by cycle by 2000% and I'll keep trying to do my bit on that colleagues, and increasing bus travel by 39%. The report on vehicle usage. Mayor Brabin says, we will investigate roadspace reallocation on key corridors for cycling, walking and public transport as a key mechanism for reducing travel by private car. We will do this by developing an overarching strategy and scrutinising the case for construction of new roads through the funding that we control and only moves schemes forward where they demonstrate significant benefit in delivering our priorities. There was no mention of that in the report. A good project to data, including demolition of existing structures and construction of new ones and therefore the build phase, because how many years would it therefore be before environmentally it breaks even? Officers should be able to assess the detriment because the small scale resurfacing programme which is at present taking place on these roads, this morning was taking 40 minutes to cover two miles today during an extended peak period and I believe other cabinet members and colleagues of the panel may have also been stuck in that. So that's an indicator of what's to come. If every vehicle across an extended period is taking 40 minutes to cover two miles, there's significant environmental detractions. At cabinet, the leader said, officers are here to go through every single detail. Having watched the webcast, you will see that it was clear that they weren't, as officers were not brought back into the meeting to summarise at the end and answer any questions, again despite I asked three times for that. So there was no quality meeting. Councillor McBride said he appreciated the inconvenience and interestingly, he also agreed that air quality needs investigating. That should have been done before the report was written, which shows that the project is not ready for a decision. How can it say it achieves all the objectives of Cooper Bridge when clearly it doesn't? He also, therefore adding time, distance and pollution on the highways. How can you propose a scheme where another of the five key objectives is flawed? The meeting was told it has downsides as Oak Road will have to accept Oak Road. Nothing on the designs showing road safety measures for those residents and users of the recreational grounds and allotment. Another key criteria, road safety, is flawed. But if the diagram being shown was Option 30, we are anywhere but an early feasibility stage and to pass the next phase, you must be able to answer the questions, otherwise you are proving haste and repenting leisure. It's road with its narrow bridges and on to the B618 and to Oak Road. And we heard at the 11 hour to Brooklands and Allendale, whose residents now may face diversion of HGV numbers, for which cabinet offer no data and for which the residents of that huge estate were not consulted. How can it relieve congestion when I have a statement from a respected and independent transport planner, is that the layout as planned is just encouraging, enabling and accommodating people to go via Flockton to bypass the M1 M62 route and vice versa? The opportunity here will be to actually reduce the number of lanes out of Combridge Road to discourage that behaviour as they have done at the bridges, but as long as it remains quicker to wrap the run through Midlane Flockton, people will do so. Deliberately choking the traffic at various points will keep the traffic back on the motorway. That engineer works independently with DFT and with government, therefore very valid what he says. How long will it take for a scheme to show any net increase in journey time when, as mentioned, the planned development takes place on the existing highway? You have to look at the whole picture and not just the rosy bits many years later. There was no answer as to why the new facility, if it is indeed the best engineering option, couldn't be built north of the existing road on farmland. When you spend, it means that you could build the gyratory in what's called offline and therefore not have the congestion of building on an existing road. And colleagues will remember that those very same fields were at one point considered for huge industrial areas in the local plan. So it's not as if the sacrosanct, they have been considered for development before. This would remove congestion during the construction phase, leaving only the linkages which to be made. A full report on, an officer says that they are widening the A62 from Stocksbank in Merfield down through what is known as the Three Nuns Junction. This is not included in the Option 30 drawing and we were told at cabinet, the scheme aims to offer more running lanes to prioritise bus travel and does it therefore negate objective number one? We're told the project includes the widening of the A62 under the current rail bridge, but will not increase the height under it. Therefore, it's still restricting the passage of vehicles and the economic growth of the area. I think it's 14 foot six at the moment is the bridge height, 16 foot six is the necessary height for a full HGV. Also, they're widening that bridge may have impact further on air quality and congestion if we have to stop the rail travel and put people on to buses. Brabin's policies. Road safety is a priority, but there are no changes at the Miller and Carter entrance and exit, despite this being promised by officers during consultation. Putting a slip road in is an easy solution. There's no safe crossing point between, on Cooper Bridge Road, between the Cooper Bridge roundabout and the turning to the left at the traffic lights. So for those living many lanes with no safe crossing, no signalised contrusing. During public questions, Mrs Howard of Oak Road raised issues relating to the volume of traffic, number of buses passing, damage to parked cars and progress on a CPO and asked for a crossing across there. None of this was properly answered. We are told it contributes towards economic and housing growth. So it didn't. These are not, I am told by Calderdale councillor, that the inspector in the Calderdale local planning somehow addresses Riverside, Bradley, Merfield 25 etc. Councillor McBride obviously no highways information. That is a statement without facts or basis. There's a duty to cooperate with other authorities, both through the recommendations of our previous scrutiny panel and ward member consultation. This is a joint project with area affected, namely Brig House. For the decision to meet its objective, this is essential. But a ward member for Brig House has written to me saying, whilst I recall receiving an email about the consultation, there was no meaningful discussions prior to this. I would have expected a meeting request nice to be informed. We equally do not believe this information and changes have been fed into our local plan, had it not for individuals raising this, the inspector thought about the existing businesses on Leeds Road and Bradley such as Marston's, the former post office. But looking at the plans which we don't have up unfortunately, you'd want to ensure that existing businesses were being accommodated. The plan, when you look at them in detail, shows that there is fatal detrimental impacts on businesses. Didn't address the concerns relating to the 11th hour suggestion of an HGV restriction on Oak Road and therefore the dispersal of worries on nearby estates who would at that point have been unaware of the proposals. Damningly Chair, I am told by the police that following checks, it appears that we were unaware of the proposed changes. Your email has now been shared with the road policing unit for them to review and respond to proposals. Surely to make an informed decision, you'd want to ensure that the key partners such as the police who we had looked to, if they object, it fails and you therefore don't deliver their scheme. They didn't answer questions about access to existing businesses from Bradley Industrial Park from ward members. The leader said, and I believe he's wrong, the only way to find out about the impact on Oak Road is to pass the next stage. Kirklees and their engineers have expensive modelling programmes. They have many acronyms for highway modelling things. There is also an established highways principle called the desire line, which for HGV drivers will mean taking the next available route which is through Brooklands, Allendale or Keldragate. If you look in detail at Option 30 and the Securitas route, to go from Huddersfield to go back down to the roundabout, is this adequate, because it was a small scale drawing, is this adequate for goods vehicles making that manoeuvre? And there's no evidence of the number of vehicles that will be diverted. So no consideration about how many vehicles at one time may be on that roundabout waiting to make this Securitas route home. How can you pass a major scheme when key elements are uncertain without wasting money or, the schematics didn't give a good impression of what the active travel measures were. I asked about future maintenance of the active travel routes because it was shown to be actively considered for the carriageway. Without that planning and preparation, the routes are a white elephant as vulnerable users would avoid them. I've previously been in contact and asked questions of officers and none of the data essential for active Plan 120, cycle infrastructure design. And amongst that, I raised at cabinet several criteria such as that cyclists must be treated as vehicles, not pedestrians. Routes should be designed only by those. The section from Cooper Bridge to Bradley has many receptive properties each side for people who may need them for home or business and also to encourage cyclists to use the new Bradley to Brig House route. Mayor Brabin see their funding withdrawn. Government has already refused level up fundings to Worcester Council because of their lack of support for sustainable transport. So it looks like there will be political repercussions for authorities which are not working to LTN 120 gear change and this will be further examined when active travel body comes in form. Sent a blank one, but no completed one was ever included in reports, nor did we ever see anything about the cycling level of service.
So that's your 20 minutes Martin.
Thank you. Or the junction assessment tools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that item allowed up to 20 minutes for the signatories that's been taken up. I assume this, very quickly councillor Patrick, if you just use your microphone.
Yeah, I just wanted to say why was a signatory to this? The issues raised by ward councillors, members of the public and councillor Bolt resonate with me from my own experience with a major scheme in my ward. In a letter to the calling, councillor, a man highlighted numerous important questions around consultation and technical details. Chair, there is a very real danger businesses now face closure because their voices have not been heard. It is important that the cabinet look at all the options, reappraise all the issues raised here today to avoid creating more problems. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Patrick. I'm now going to hand over to panel members if they wish to raise any issues of clarification about what.
Thank you. I'd like to ask where you think this decision is in the relation to the scheme? What do you think? What is your understanding of what the decision was that was taken? Is it the understanding that it was the decision on the scheme that the cabinet has agreed? Or is it a decision on going forward to the OBC? What do you understand?
To progress and I think the budget outlined was £10 million to progress to outline business case. With any project, and the leader isn't here today because I jotted a few notes down as we're both qualified priests and clearly the project throughout is based, going through to outline business case on Option 30, without the cabinet and the members of the public knowing that that is indeed the best option and questions were raised but unanswered about why other options such as there was a fly and the Calderdale local plan which is developing just through the side of the M62. Alternatives that have benefits for both authorities could have been looked at, it could be wasting money. And especially when the key issue promising the residents that you'll be including an HGV ban without consulting the police. If you can't deliver that... If you can't deliver that.
And just to follow up on that point, what was, in terms of the purpose of the report that was presented to Cabinet, one of the bullet points is for Cabinet to agree in principle to the scheme at this stage. And how much do you think some of that actually could be done later at the next stage, given that 10 million is coming?
Yeah, the principle that we need to resolve the roads, I think everybody agrees with. Is this the right, yeah, looking at any of the papers, yeah, we don't have data, which shows that it's going to improve the air quality, it's going to improve bus journey times. There's no dedicated bus lanes on the scheme. So the buses will point such as when the football is playing, they're going to be queuing back to Leeds Road with everybody else. The junctions, the principle seems flawed on that, that it's not a scheme which many people would use. And a key one, which West Yorkshire found with the superhighway schemes, is if you don't plan the routine, which is unsafe for most of the year. So the principle has to be sound before you go towards a practical chair.
Thank you. Do any of the panel members have questions at this stage? No? Okay. Okay, thank you very much. You can stay for the rest of the meeting if you want to, but you can also go if you want to, just to let you know, it's totally up to you. Okay, so we're going to move on now to councillors' participation. So this is now an opportunity, so again, I'll point out the areas of focus, which was relevant considerations, it was options and clarity, thank you Leah, and also clarity. So those are the three points we're going to focus on. We've received one notification of a councillor who wishes to speak in person and one written submission. So I'm going to invite councillor Homewood to speak. So you have no more than five minutes and I will let you know when you've got a minute.
Do is, I just thought, given what you're looking at today, I would just set out some of the things that I think could be taken forward as recommendations and the reason for that for you to consider as part of your deliberations on the points there. So the first thing is, I think that Cabinet should consider and review other scheme options, whether that be within the 28 options that have already been looked at or other options that could be created to appropriately assess other routes that don't require a diversion of traffic along Oak Road. I think hadn't either. And I think this is important because it isn't just a case of the question as to whether this is the best scheme against the other detrimental impacts of the scheme, particularly on residents on Oak Road. And so there's a lot more balance that I think needs to be added there. There may be other options that don't provide quite the same travel times, but are a lot less impactful on residents. And I don't think that's been fully considered and I think that would be something that should be undertaken. The second one was to say that I think Cabinet should request and consider more detailed evidence that explains why volumes of traffic in the current road layout. I think evidence should be provided that reductions in traffic along Oak Road is not being created due to the proposed scheme, essentially making a worse road network. You know, my concern is that the only reason this scheme comes out well on paper is because traffic is forced to dive road network in order to discourage traffic is not something that we should be pursuing. I think that needs to be looked at seriously. And to assess the wider impacts on other residential streets and the accessibility to Bradley Road. As was pointed out, the other alternatives would be to go through the Bradley estate. I would, not only is that obviously not desirable, I would imagine that probably HGVs in a lot of circumstances couldn't get through there anywhere because of parked cars etc. How the current proposals linked to the wider development plans in Bradley for both housing and employment. I don't think I've seen enough of that to say how this links to master planning in the area and potentially other updates that could be undertaken. You know, for example, I'm presuming that when, if there's housing development going on and building works going on, that's going to require a lot of HGV access to those sites for the next 20 years or so. So that needs to be considered. And I think Cabinet need to consider in more detail the impacts on air quality, particularly on Oak Road and Leeds Road, to ensure that no part of these roads seen a detrimental change in air quality. So I think at the moment where, from what I understand, the Cabinet report was saying, it should be very similar, i.e. there's no benefit, but it's no worsening. But I would question whether there is worsening for certain households and residents in this area, particularly if you're going to have traffic lights at Leeds Road entering to Oak Road. I don't see how that can create effects on public transport and active travel. And particularly the impact on bus services and whether the proposed cycle proposals are compliant with the. I think, of course, there is a question mark as to what decisions need to be made now and what decisions can be reserved for later. But I think some of these points are quite important to the principle of the disaster. Thank you, Chair, thank you members.
Thank you councillor Homewood. I just want to make a clarification, if that's okay. We've been talking about a HGV ban on Oak Road. So this is some of the mitigation measures that officers came up with after the cons rate limit of HGVs on Oak Road, just so we're clear on that. Assume some might still get through if they're a little bit smaller, but just to be clear on that. Are there any questions from panel members at this stage? Councillor Pinnick.
Thank you Chair, yes. Councillor Homewood is in very largely by this. Yes, all right councillor, I understand what your position is. I'd like to ask, because it seems to me there are two aspects of this. One is what are in this scheme, which may or may not be useful. I'm just wondering whether I can ask councillor Homewood whether he thinks the other bits in this, not the Cooper Bridge bit, but the other bits, whether they're useful or whether the deleterious effects on local residents is not enough to outweigh putting them in. I'm sort of trying to lead you on, giving a definite answer on this because it does strike me that some of the, I don't know whether you agree with any of that.
Well, so I think on the detail, I, some of that I don't know and I think that's the problem for me. So firstly, you mentioned about the wider stuff at Cooper Bridge. I don't know if those, if changes are made at Cooper Bridge, how much benefit that already provides. I know officers have said, no, no, because there's still a pinch point at Bradley. That's what they've said to me, but I haven't seen the details of that. And I think for me, that's what I'd like to see Cabinet looking at in more detail so they can weigh up all those detailed options of balancing that impact on residents versus the greater benefit of the scheme.
Any follow up? That's great. Councillor Smidge.
Thank you. At 3.1.33 of the Cabinet paper on page 25 of today's papers, it says that there were some appraisal results for four online options that were presented in March 2021. And I'd like to understand whether the ward councillors were appraised of those appraisal results as well, had as full a discussion as you feel that you should have as ward councillors. Am I right in that assumption?
To be fair, I wouldn't say that we've not had, we've had a lot of discussions. We've had a lot of discussions with officers and Cabinet members that are, I'm not complaining about a lack of engagement because we have had that.
Okay, it's the detail, that's what I wanted to clarify. Thanks, so much, thank you.
Thank you. Any other points by panel members? No? Just going to keep asking everyone, try and get as close to the mic as possible, just so everyone can hear you. Right then, we're going to move on to a written statement that we have from councillor Amanda Pinnick. And Jodie's going to read that out for us.
By the line, "The proposed scheme is to take place. I write this letter in response to the calling decision of Cabinet made on 12th October 2021 pertaining to the A62 Cooper Bridge scheme proposal. At the Cabinet meeting, my ward colleagues and I made arrangements and made further avenues are explored. As a ward councillor, I am keen that a scheme of this magnitude, that clear impacts on residents of Oak Road, Leeds Road and Bradley Road is not taken lightly. The report has very limited details on the levels of disruption the scheme is likely to cause and how residents who live there will be impacted and what mitigation would be made available to them. There will be a significant concern for anyone to achieve, but not at the expense of others. The report clearly documents several instances of how the scheme would improve the locality, which is good to hear. But how will this scheme benefit Oak Road residents? What measurable outcomes are there likely to be? Key important questions that residents of Oak Road deserve to be answered without delay and with clarity. In my view, the answers to these questions are too important to progress with the scheme without being clearly addressed. Another important question to consider is how viable is this scheme anyway? And are there any favourable suggestions to Cabinet? I believe as councillors, we have a greater understanding of communities and the dynamics of our wards and the wider implications of council policy on the ground. Therefore, we are best placed to consider the impacts of the Cooper Bridge scheme holistically. To do this, Cabinet needs to know the options available and in isolation of businesses and housing developments provisioned under the Kirkleys local plan and other neighbouring connibations. Connibations. To close, I would like to ask panel to seriously consider the details in my letter and to make recommendations to reflect the issues I have raised relating to air quality, clarity around disruption and the Cabinet having a holistic view from an advantaged.
She's not here to obviously answer any clarification points. But is there anything that anyone wants to raise at this stage? Nope. Okey dokey, thank you very much.
Chair, would you take a written submission from one of the parish councils affected by this scheme?
Let me just check if we can do that because obviously we haven't, we have. Let me just check because we haven't had a notification of that earlier, so let me. All right, we should have received notice of this really councillor Bolt, but I will allow it now. It has to be within five minutes, so let's get sharpish. Okay?
Thank you Chair. "To whom it may concern, good afternoon. I am writing regarding the calling of Mr Clarke to Murfield Town Council. To whom it may concern, good afternoon. I am writing regarding the calling of the Cabinet decision in relation to the A62 Cooper Bridge Corridor Improvement Scheme. A meeting was held with Murfield Town Council, Sarah Kearns and Keith Bloomfield on the 8th of July. During the meeting, Keith Bloomfield on several occasions refused to answer questions put to him, mainly by councillor Bolt but also councillor Lee's Hamilton and others. At one point, your points that were raised and answered in the meeting and also at the bottom, a copy of an email sent to Sarah Kearns following the meeting, to which we have not had the courtesy of reply. The data lists many of the things raised, things like the impact on Miller and Carter. This will be looked at. Ravenstop Cycling Club is based in Murfield but have had no contact. Sarah will contact and come forward documents." Yeah, we have a, we signed a legal document, a parish charter that Kirkleys would engage. There are five town and parish councils, two affected by this, I presume. Kurt Burner may be unaware, but that's a statement from Murfield, which is the probably nearest and primarily affected in terms of the B618 and the Three Nuns area. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. I've got to say, obviously there was a couple of officers mentioned there and thank you. Onto public participation now. I don't know if any panel members wanted to make any points about that, obviously the person's not here to respond. Okay, thank you. Public participations, so this is now an opportunity for members of the public to give evidence on the issues raised by the calling. We've received one notification of a person who wishes to speak in person and one written submission. So we have Angela Howard here, welcome Angela. You've got five minutes to speak and I'll let you know when you've got one minute to go. Again, we're obviously asking anyone who speaks to keep it in relation to the calling decision. So when you're ready Angela.
Okay. Back in the summer, feelings were running very high in my locality, which is the Oak Road area. Several of the councillors kindly turned up to that meeting and things got underway. A lot of views were expressed, all of them expressing great concern how it would affect us. So I apologise if I repeat things that councillor Bolt and councillor Homewood have already mentioned, but here we go. I represent the residents of Oak Road and the Low End people for no obvious reason. The current route from Bradley Light up Bradley Road is multi-laned and is well able to carry high volumes of traffic. Whereas Oak Road is a narrow residential street with parking along one side, sometimes on both sides. School buses currently use our road and twice in the last month, the buses have scraped parked cars causing a bit of damage because of the width of the road. There's grave, we would also like to see a safe crossing for children to access the park. Large vehicles will have great difficulty turning right onto Oak Road as the corner is so tight, approximately 120 degrees. We've seen this many times, a lot of struggle. If HGVs are to be rerouted to avoid Oak Road, where are they going to go to reach Bradley Road? It's probable that they'll have to turn right onto Brooklands, pass an old people's home to reach Keldridge Gate and then turn right to Bradley Road, causing a nuisance to many more residents. Those residents have not been incorporated, need resurfacing. We cannot ignore the listed building, formerly an inn used by the Luddites apparently, situated on Oak Road. The owners are very concerned that the traffic will cause more vibrations which will damage their foundations. So in conclusion, we would like other options to be thoroughly investigated and more detailed outcomes put forward for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much Angela. I'm sure panel members may have questions, there's just a couple I wanted to ask you. Firstly, can I ask you about on Oak Road, one of the mitigations that's been presented since the consultation? Sorry, that's not since the consultation, it's at the beginning. One of the options with Oak Road is to turn it into a one-way under this proposed scheme. Can I ask you if you think that would be a benefit at all?
We can see actually that might be a good thing. Those problems with people having to wait while the other side comes along, that does cause a problem. So probably one way would be an advantage. But awkward for people who are trying to access Oak Road from the Bradley Road end, it would be a big diversion.
And then can I ask you what you felt so far about the consultation and engagement process for this proposed scheme, the way it's been run, how have you felt?
Well, I have felt included, especially as yourself actually called, visiting people in their homes and getting, I don't know how much feedback you got that day, but I appreciated your calling on me. We haven't really had any big meetings since that initial one, but I intend to when we get some more clarification, so we can get some feedback from residents.
I guess I was talking more about the, now that you're happy to see us as councillors and what the council has presented in its consultation and engagement exercises.
Sorry, we're, this is all new to me. I'm wading through treacle at the moment, so councillor Bolt's been very good, his comprehensive outline's been very helpful. And Mr Homewood as well, councillor Homewood, so we're finding our way through it. But obviously there are a lot more things to consider that even I wasn't aware of, that I'm learning as I go along.
Thank you very much Angela, appreciate that. Do panel members have any questions that they want to put to Angela at this stage? No? Thank you Angela, appreciate that. So the next one, we've got a written submission from Ken Smith. So I think again.
Large amount of money quoted for these works. It has been asked whether the cost is justified by the benefits. If such a large amount of money can be made available, the scheme would relieve what is a relatively small local problem. Wouldn't a more strategic scheme offer better value for this large investment? For example, an improvement of access with the M1 from its junction 38. Number two, define the problem and success. The issue around Cooper Bridge is officers have studied traffic movements around this roundabout. That shows that of the traffic from the west Brigouge and M62, 50% then goes towards Huddersfield. The remaining half travels towards Leeds or Murfield. The latest irritation of the scheme removes all traffic going towards Leeds or Murfield from the roundabout. This in itself, removing half the traffic, could remove most or all, bracket effect, leaving the rest of the scheme until an evaluation can be made. Number four, effect on other changes. It should be noted that Highways England has raised concerns about the possible housing plan for Bradley Villa Farm by Bradford Road and backing on to the M62. It is possible. It is possible that this agency may consider an off-ramp from the M sixty-two at that point. Bradley Road strike Oak Road. The proposal to remove the southbound right turn into Bradley Road from Leeds Road is to improve southbound flow at the existing traffic lights assembly. It has been argued that only a small amount of traffic currently use this right turn. However, the proposal means a creation only four hundred yards away of a new traffic lane and a new traffic light system to cross Leeds Road to enter Oak Road. This creates a new disruption of northbound Leeds Road traffic and would cause additions on Oak Road. This would be a major and disproportionate cost for what is considered to be a small amount of traffic. Point six, Oak Road from South. A recent consideration is the plan is to buy HGVs from Oak Road. Some HGV traffic coming from Huddersfield will need to access Curran Bridge. If they can't use Oak Road, what other provision would that be field? Residents of Oak Road would have to cross Leeds Road at its junction with Bradley Road to turn right, if this is still allowed in the scheme, or worse, to travel to Cooper Bridge roundabout north to go round it to return south. A nonsense especially considerable to, considering the route to Huddersfield for these residents will be imagine beyond currently have to enter Oak Road. Traverse across traffic on Bradley Road and cross Leeds Road at the traffic lights adjourned in Bradley Road. This route, including its conflicting move across Bradley Road and its further stop to Leeds Road in order to cross it, is because it is difficult lane in the current proposal could be used to create a right turn to Curran Bridge, either at the existing lights or by use of small amounts of land to the east of Leeds Road to make a link with Curran Bridge. Point nine, a plea for gradual approach. It is not clear that a large budget proposed is best used here. For instance, by improving access to the M one, it is clear that the majority of the proposals caused a great deal of difficulty as a very considerable expense. The current proposal to remove traffic at the roundabout travelling from the west to go north and north-east would remove fifty percent of traffic from the west using the roundabout. That may well be sufficient to completely or mostly remove issues on the roundabout. I urge the council to consider deployment of that part of the proposal as a single improvement and then take time to consider its consequences before embarking on any more of the scheme.
Thank you, Jorder. He's not here to answer any clarifications, but if anyone's, any panel member's got any points at this stage? Yes, exactly. Okidoka. So we, the next one is opening statement by, just happy to keep proceeding. Yeah, okay, let's, let's take ten minutes then and then Welcome back to the special meeting of the Economy and Neighbourhood Scrutiny Panel. I understand there are some technical issues ongoing online. Some people are able to watch and some people aren't. Something to do with the data centre, which Philip understands a lot better than I do. But we're doing our best to try and clear up the link, but there will be a full recording available, which will be popped on to YouTube right after the meeting. So apologies if you are facing some technical problems trying to listen in today. Right then, we're going to move on to item five, which is the opening statement by decision makers. I'll now ask councillor McBride to provide his opening status, opening statement and he will also be joined by two officers, Edward Highfield and Sarah Cairns as well, so
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just made this comment, the scheme is of strategic importance. It's an integral part of resolving the bottleneck at Cooper Bridge and congestion at the Bradley Junction with Leeds Road. It's a consequence of rejecting a proposal which would have meant a significant loss to an ancient wood. This proposal would work and its major features at Cooper Bridge would massively improve traffic flows in all directions and in particular to Leeds Road. There are however, features further up the road, particularly at Oak Road, which cause significant difficulties, both there and for negotiating the lower part of Leeds Road. I know the three board councillors have serious reservations, particularly about Oak Road, as do the residents. There are many, myself included, who would welcome a reappraisal of this feature of the proposed programme. Officers will present a more detailed appraisal, but I would emphasise that this is an outline stage of the proposal, which is capable of modification. Local councillors are also acutely aware that the, that the efficient scheme at this point impacts on the ability to deal adequately with movements which will accrue from the proposed housing developments at Bradley, praise. So really, what I'm saying is part of the scheme is, I think, open to a reassessment and other parts I think are integral. In other words, Cooper Bridge itself, I think is an excellent scheme. I think they don't have any reservations about that. But the points being made are well taken. I've listened carefully to what people have said.
Thank you. So I think officers are going to follow up now and we can come in later with clarification, a panel member, so we've got Edward and Sarah.
Okay, thank you. So my name's Edward Highfield, I'm service director for Skills and Regeneration at the council and I'll take through some of the opening remarks and put a bit more flesh on the detail of where we are in the decision-making process. And then my colleague Sarah will try and answer as many of the very detailed questions that we've had submitted as possible. So in terms of opening summary, as councillor McBride has said, the scheme is of strategic importance to Kirkcree's. We've heard it referenced as a small local problem. I don't think that's the case. The corridor from the M sixty-two, the impact on Cooper Bridge, Bradley Junctions and the planned housing growth makes this a strategic significantly, strategically significant scheme for the region, not just Kirkcree's. One thing that I have heard many times in my time with the council is that doing nothing is not an option. So there is, there is a long chronology of looking at this. So the current scheme, as councillor McBride has said, comes after extensive options analysis, which we will discuss in more detail this afternoon. But the key point is, we are in a world of looking now on network solutions and that inevitably makes our options more limited and will explain how we got there and why that decision was taken. I think it's worth highlighting that recent consultation to specific elements of the scheme such as Oak Road or the detail of cycling provision, rather than the objectives of the scheme in general and some of the other elements around, around Cooper Bridge. So the scheme aims to strike a balance between minimising the environmental impacts whilst meeting transport need and unlocking future. I think we've heard earlier that those are concerned that this scheme I think we've heard earlier that those are concerned that this scheme hasn't been developed alongside some of the local plan allocations. That's not the case at all. In fact, this scheme is mentioned in the local plan because of the infrastructure constraints that we knew those strategic land allocations was going to throw up. In accordance with national guidance, the development of the outline business case is based on an outline design and a proportionate level of appraisal. And that's something that I think we'll come back to a number of times about where we are in the decision making process, what you would expect to see in an outline vision for a scheme of this nature. And it will also be subject to combined authority assurance processes. So that we're not making, the cabinet did not make a final decision on this scheme. It was asked to consider that first gateway approval. So which allows us to get into the detailed design and environmental assessments. The project team is absolutely committed to working with local community throughout the next day. Detailed questions to answer, we've heard a lot of them today. Lots were submitted in advance for this meeting, which we will go through. We have an extensive list of questions submitted, we will go through as many of those as possible. But it's vital that I think we recognise that the way to. So apologies, I've gone too far. We've heard a little bit about, it's been published and fixed for some time. I won't read through them, they're there, but it's around congestion, around unlocking growth, around improving road safety, supporting air quality improvements and improving pedestrian. To recap in terms of where we are in the programme. Summary of the scheme history is provided over the next two slides. So 1516, as we've heard reference to, there was original link road options, usability work at that point in time around an off-network new link road solution. We moved to looking at online options, lots of environmental land. And I think history would judge that that was absolutely the right decision to be made. We went to pre-decision scrutiny on the 24th of August and we were at cabinet on the 12th of October. All in and the cabinet process. But the intention was to then submit the outline business case to the Mayor Combined Authority in late 2021, which would unlock then, as I say, the future phases of development of the scheme, planning consultation December 23, submitting the full business case spring 2024 and hopefully being on site with some works summer 2024. The point being that there is a lot of work ahead of us. We are not fixing the final design today or cabinet, as I've said. I've mentioned pre-decision scrutiny, it's important to highlight that the decisions there. So these were the recommendations from pre-decision scrutiny in terms of noting the concerns of residents, particularly of Oak Road, talking about the need for clear metrics to demonstrate that we can measure the impact and the success of the scheme for consultations with elected members in all wards impacted by the scheme, not just those immediately around the physical works and recognising the importance of climate change and model shift. And we will demonstrate through these slides, hopefully how we've responded to those and how we did in the cabinet report. Want us to say, well, what decision was it that was taken to cabinet? What does an outline business case actually commit us to? As I've said, the outline business case, if approved by cabinet, seeks West Yorkshire Combined Authority funding to enable the team to develop the scheme to the full business case stage. That would include developing the preliminary and the detailed design of the preferred scheme, undertaking further more invasive surveys, such as topographical drainage, ground investigations, environmental impact. So that's the point about proportionality. These things cost an awful lot of money. You don't do that until you've gone through a proportionate process of identifying the preferred scheme, discounting other options. You couldn't possibly do all of that on 30 options. You need to narrow it down before you go into the full detailed design process. Continuing the engagement and consultation with statutory and non-statutory key stakeholders. Doing, as I say, the further detailed assessments around the transport environmental impacts and then capturing all of that in a full business case that would be submitted to the command authority again for further appraisal. That's absolutely standard project development. Apologies, need to go back one. So I hope this is helpful in terms of outline business case versus full business case. What does evolve mean was one of the questions we were asked in the correspondence. We've said that we can refine the scheme, we can continue to evolve the scheme. So what does that actually mean in practical terms? So what you can do after an outline business case is submitted and you are working on the detail is you can continue to review and amend the designs, such as road alignment, specifically the junction design. So a final decision about Oak Road, is it in or out? Is it going to be made one way? Is it going to be removed from the scheme altogether? Are we going to ban the right turn onto Bradley Road? Those are all final decisions that will come after we've done the detailed design. And we could answer a lot of the questions that have been answered today to full satisfaction. And it would also look at those other more technical aspects around speed limits, weight limits, positioning of street furniture, the impact on the right turn. So we absolutely acknowledge that there's a lot of detail to work through. That's why it's an outline business case. What you can't do after an outline business case is to rip the whole thing up and start again. So some of the options that have been discounted around the off-network, we are discounting the off-network. If we go with this preferred option, we are discounting things like flyovers or one of the original gyratory options, the three main options that were consulted on a few years ago. We are discounting them and we are saying that the on-network solution is the one that's preferred with the works as anticipated. If you wanted to go to one of those options, you would in effect, you just have to start the whole process again. And you can't do anything that will significantly reduce the value for money offered by the scheme. So the outline business case will be appraised by the West Yorkshire Combined Authority. The BCR, the benefit cost ratio is in the cabinet report. If that can change a bit, as you add things in, you take things out, you crystallise some of the costs, the benefit cost ratio will change. But you can't fundamentally look at something that's massively reduced in terms of its overall value for money or you would need to start again. So as you've heard, there are three areas for focus for us to focus on through the remainder of this presentation. They are grouped under the three headings you've heard already. So the remainder of this presentation is going to go through each of the bullet points on the right hand side and hopefully answer the questions fully that have been put in front of us. In terms of how that's going to work, before I hand over to Sarah. The first under relevant considerations is that there were lots of unanswered technical questions asked to cabinet. So what we've seen over the last week or so is a number of documents, putting the flesh on the bones of what those questions were. We've had a document called key lines of inquiry document that was issued to us, which we responded to by five o'clock on Thursday, the 28th of October. So those key lines of inquiries were responded to. Back came some additional questions which we received on Friday, the 29th, which we will cover in this presentation. There were then over 20 detailed questions received from other documentation and from a review of the cabinet meeting, many of which we've heard repeated this afternoon. We will do our best to go through all of those. And at the very end of this presentation, there's a bit of a mop up of the questions to make sure that we've answered them all. So Sarah is going to take us through the detail of those questions.
Thank you, Edward. Okay, so in no particular order, we'll take you through some of the questions that we know are outstanding. One which has been repeated today is around the motion taken in November 18 and the impacts on Flockton. Just to reiterate, the motion taken in November 18 was that an impact assessment should take place before the work starts. It was also clear that the scheme that was part of that motion or being considered at that time was a link road scheme. We have now moved to an online scheme, as we've already heard. And that doesn't create as much capacity as a link road scheme. And as a result of that, we don't see as much strategic rerouting of traffic, which means in essence, this scheme is not as attractive to traffic running through Flockton. I've got a little bit more information on that on the next slide. However, we are, as we've already heard, only at OBC stage, we will be updating our traffic forecast at FBC. And that will ultimately define whether the impacts in Flockton or the scale of the impacts in Flockton and Grangemoor. And we'll inform whatever we put into a report that we can prepare and submit as part of the cabinet report at FBC. I should just point out that based on the OBC traffic forecast, neither Grangemoor nor Flockton meet the criteria to be considered for an air quality impact. That's because the traffic changes are relatively minimal in those areas. Sorry, we'll just try and get the clicker to work, there we go. Okay, so just to summarise the traffic data that was included in some of the cabinet reports. We have forecast in accordance with DFT guidance. We have forecast changes in two years. That is 2026, when we expect to open the scheme and 15 years later, which we refer to as the design year. What we are seeing along Lyle Lane and through Barnsway Road into Flockton is that the increases range from actually a small decrease in traffic through to a 7% increase, which is 48% vehicles, that's in the peak periods, I should say. In 2041, which is our design period, again, that ranges from a small decrease through to a 13% increase. The largest increase being along Lyle Lane, but not continuing through into Flockton. As I say, that information was included in the cabinet papers, but it will be updated in FBC. And so that will ultimately inform any impact assessment. There was also, again, being repeated today, a question about the impact during construction as a result of us delivering an online option. I will just clarify, because I wasn't entirely clear earlier when councillor Warr raised it. But just to be clear, the roundabout that we're proposing at Cooper Bridge is predominantly offline. It is not in the same location as the existing roundabout. So just to be clear on that, it's not fully online. However, as you know, we moved to a predominantly online solution following the elimination of link road options, which we've already talked about. In appraising the scheme at OBC, we have taken account of the economic disbenefit. So we have had some input from a contractor at a high level as to how they would phase the delivery of this scheme. And that's helped us inform potential traffic impacts and take account of those in economic terms. So by that, I mean in monetary terms. Once we move into a full business case, we will develop our construction plans and detailed environmental assessments. And that will ultimately answer some of those questions in more detail. Relevant design guidance, we've interpreted from the questions that we've had back and I think again, from probably what's been raised today, that this was in reference to LTM 120. So just to be clear, this is guidance. There is no compliance checklist as such within LTM 120. However, it does have two assessments and audit features. One is what we call a CLOST cycle level of service tool and the other is a junction assessment tool. They are complemented by road safety audits, which we would do regardless of LTM 120. Just to be clear, this is not an active mode scheme, which tends to be where the implication of funding withdrawal sits. What this is, is a transport scheme where we are trying to deliver as best we can active infrastructure within that. We have, to be clear, we've revised the active mode design following consultation. And I should say, we have, in doing that, had a meeting with the Kirkcree Cycling Campaign on the final, I won't say final, but the latest designs. And we did get positive feedback from that group. We have undertaken the CLOST on the latest design, the junction assessment is a larger piece of work because this is quite a large scheme, so that work is ongoing. But this, again, I will just reiterate, this is or can be an iterative process, i.e. as and when we may amend the design as it goes forward, we may need to revisit some of that work and we'll continue to do that through FBC. Bus priorities, again, we've had this raised today. Just a reminder that this is primarily a junction improvement scheme, but we have considered bus priority. The highway capacity within the extents of the scheme is limited, particularly through Bradley Junction. And therefore, the provision of bus lanes throughout the scheme could only be achieved by relocating existing lanes. That would have consequences and worsen the queuing of general traffic in the area. And that in itself then starts to impact the bus's ability to access those bus lanes and it becomes counterproductive with what the scheme is trying to achieve. Instead, the scheme is aiming at improving journey times for all vehicles and that includes buses. We have also incorporated intelligent transport systems, which allows bus priorities at traffic signals. And that will further improve the journey times for buses from those that were modelled and reported in the cabinet report. In terms of model shift, there is a requirement for the scheme to realise model shift is set out in our scheme objectives. Both in reference to the improved journey times, which will benefit buses, but more notably in objective five, which stipulates, noted in the cabinet paper, stipulates a requirement to realise an increase in active mode journeys. Now, we have in agreement with the Combined Authority, delayed quantifying that target. And that is intentional to allow us to undertake surveys next year, which we will treat as a baseline for that. We didn't want to undertake surveys during the pandemic. We are tied to doing so in neutral periods and we don't want those results unnecessarily skewed by the pandemic restrictions. Clarity in relation to measurable objectives. So again, based on the materials we've received over the last week, we have already provided one response in relation to this and we understand the outstanding query to relate specifically to the air quality objective. So to be clear, that object has been agreed in liaison with public protection officers. And it is reflective of the council's commitment to improve air quality in the Bradley area. It's already been mentioned that there is an air quality management area declared for Bradley. And so the commitment is to improve air quality in that area below the annual nitrogen dioxide threshold of 40 micrograms per cubic metre. The objective, as it's written, also places an onus on the project team to consider the wider impacts of the scheme by not creating new areas of concerns or new AQMA's elsewhere on the network. In doing that, we are required to comply with other thresholds within the air quality regulations over and above the mentioned annual threshold of 40 micrograms. So that includes hourly thresholds. And we will during construction be undertaking additional monitoring in the area so that we can measure ourselves against those thresholds. In undertaking our air quality impact assessment, which we'll do in full business case stage, we will take account of the impacts during constructions and where appropriate, as I say, will enhance the monitoring that's undertaken in the area. We will also during that stage develop the construction environmental management plan, which will again set out how we plan to manage the environmental impact during the construction stage. And again, already mentioned, but the intelligent transport systems will support the council's air quality action plan, the aims of the air quality action plan in reducing pollutants. I think to be clear and just to come back to the issue raised earlier, air quality is about health and the impact on people's health. And for that reason, you cannot break even on air quality. And for that reason, you cannot break even on air quality. So and actually, as time progresses, air quality in general is predicted to improve as people move to electric vehicles and such like. For this reason, the the objective focuses on the the year, the first year of opening. Because that is likely to be the worst performing year from an air quality point of view. So there was some questions raised around the optioneering and who's been involved in that and how we've gone about that. And just to reiterate that in the materials we've exchanged with with the panel over the last week, we have provided a full list of the options that we have considered and a high level summary as to why they have been eliminated. And I just want to reiterate that that process has been in accordance with D F T guidance, where you you start with a long list of options that you then shortlist. We have also, just to be clear, got a dedicated project board for this scheme. So that is made up of senior officers within the council. And and we have we we have refined our original shortlist following the consultation that was undertaken in 2018, 2019, and in in liaison with lead Cabinet members and senior officers. As you know, knew we did set out in the documents that we provided to the panel, we considered new link road options in an attempt to lessen the environmental impact. But ultimately, following a stay from the Cabinet Lead last year, we moved to the online options that we've we've now been talking about. And just to reiterate as well, sorry, before we move on, we've moved on a bit too quick. But there's in identifying the preferred options and presenting the appraisal results of those shortlist that has been presented to the exec team in L M T earlier this year in in reaching that recommendation for a preferred option. Other technical questions. So we're concerned about running out of of time. So these are a quick snapshot of other questions that I think were raised in the materials. And does the road widening mean loss of of a bus lane? The short answer is no. I think that's the clarification from Cabinet now. I I understand the context. The widening that we're proposing between Cooper Bridge is between the Three Nuns Junction and and Cooper Bridge, not up to Stock's Bank. So that's my mistaken Cabinet presentation. So apologies for that. But just to clarify, there's no bus lanes expected to be lost as a result of the scheme. Was there input into the design from experienced road cyclists? Yes, yes, there was both on on the council side. But as I say, we have now also engaged with the had a had a dedicated meeting with the Kirklees Cycling Campaign on the latest design changes. And no information provided on maintenance regime for segregated active travel. We do need to develop the design in more detail to be able to work through the maintenance requirements. And desire were desire lines considered as part of the scheme regi, uh, scheme design, sorry? Yes, they were. Again, as I've mentioned, we'll be undertaking surveys next year. So that may result in a refine to some of the active mode desire lines. What are the detailed mitigation measures for impacting the businesses? We have contacted all affected landowners, including the businesses, and met with with them where requested. We will continue to do that as the design develops to negotiate what those final mitigations look like. Issues relating to buses damaging parked vehicles on Oak Road and clarity regarding C P O. I think the the question around C P O in this context was specifically around the Oak Road and Leeds Road area. But just to confirm, obviously, as we move through the detailed design, there will be engagement with the bus companies to understand how services can and will be affected that use Oak Road. My understanding it is just the school services that use that. But by our proposals to change Oak Road to one way will help to improve that because it removes the conflict between two-way traffic and and provides a little bit more room for that that one-way travelling traffic. We will also, in the current design, we've proposed a parking base. So the 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 parked vehicles are clearly delineated, if you like, from the the actual highway. In relation to C P O, we, at this stage, have only identified one property on Leeds Road that we believe we need to C P O, and that we have written to the the that property. There is also a small amount of of private land on Oak Road, which we think ideally we would like. And again, we've we've written to that landowner. We do not anticipate any other C P O on on Oak Road. Just to be clear, there is land requirements throughout the scheme in general, but specifically in that area. And that's all we expect. Is a crossing going to be provided to the park opposite the houses? Yes, we've already amended in the updated design to show a repositioned crossing. But again, we've said we will we will work with the local community through the next stage so that that detail can be amended as we move forward. And effective neighbouring roads are banning lorries on Oak Road. And just to be clear, the proposal to ban or or put any sort of weight restriction on Oak Road was not part of the the original proposal. That has been in response to the consultation results. So we that will be subject to further examination in the next stage and engagement with emergency services and and road safety auditors as as we referenced in the Cabinet presentation. But I think, to be clear, I think the ongoing engagement between ourselves and the local community will help inform or shape what that final design looks like. So now it is, at this stage, just a a proposal that needs further investigation. And I think we can't click on, but I think that was the last slide.
Is that everything?
Yeah, that's what we were told not to move off that final slide. But yeah, that's the presentation. Hopefully, that's set the context and answered as many of the specific questions. Certainly, all I think it answers all of the questions we were provided with in advance. There were others added this afternoon, but they weren't directly relevant to the three areas. So I think we've gone through it diligently. That's the end of our presentation.
Okay, okay. So I'm going to pass it over to panel members. Do you have any questions that you want to ask? Okay, councillor Smidge.
Thank you. I'm coming back to the decision that was taken. And I just, I want clarity around this decision as to what was. I'd like clarity because you say the O B C is ready. But the Cabinet decision was to agree in principle to the scheme. So I want to know where that sits being. And if they were agreeing to the principle to the scheme, who agrees to the O B C? Before it goes to the Combined Authority. I'm I'm finished. But also want classification around the O B C. Because you said that some things can be changed after the O B C and some things can't. So picking up on councillor McBride's comment, that operation of the scheme, as in these are the roads that we're going to be altering, et cetera, in the O B C, that can't change the configuration of roads.
Excuse me, can you just use your microphone, councillor McBride? Thank you.
Partly the answer is technical, but partly in features which relate to Oak Road and the movements which have had to be created because of the decision not to go ahead with a scheme which would would have taken out a word. Those elements are subjects, my understanding of what we might be able to do. Officers will confirm whether or not that's true.
Yeah, that's right. So as I tried to outline movement onto Bradley Road. The reason for that is because in order to essentially to have more green lighted traffic movement, you can, you need to take one of the movements away. If you take the right movement away, you then have to is a refinement that would be considered and 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 nailed down at the at the full business case stage. Consequently, whether or not Oak Road is needed to be made one way would be made at the final business case decision. That's not something that would be locked down at O B C stage. To, you know, to submit the final version of the outline business case in terms of, you know, it'll be a very thick document. The final decision to submit it in terms of its accuracy, its proofreading, all of that is delegated to the strategic director. So Cabinet was asked to endorse the the this the scheme principles, the scheme objectives, the direction of travel to
about the O B C and the technical, because, you know, it's not in the papers. So my, when I've looked at these delegations that are there, I didn't see a delegation to the strategic director to agree the O B C. Okay, funding to work up to full business case. So agreement to enter into the funding, presumably for the 10 million you're going for in the O B C. Authorise the council to incur expenditure in working up the scheme. Agreements that may be necessary to work up to the A sixty-two, including funding. Now, that is, that one is not clear as to whether that is a delegation to work up any agreements and delegate to enter into a grant agreement for the funding of the A sixty-two. And my previous comment relates to that as well. That those two are not clear as to whether they're for the whole of the scheme, C P Os. In your timeline, I see you've got a Cabinet final scheme, February 2024. But you're not saying in your in your decision that you're coming back to Cabinet for full business case approval. This is why I'm asking. Are you coming back to Cabinet for full business case approval? Are these delegations that you're giving just for this part of the what this decision actually is? That's where I'm asking.
Microphone, Peter.
It also would require, what shall we say, a reapproval of the element that is not contentious, i.e. Cooper Bridge itself. So it really is a concept, what I am conceding the point, I think officers are agreeing, that we should look at that element which is now addressing, which we should look at, not the 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 whole scheme and the concept of the scheme, the biggest part of which, of course, is Cooper Bridge. Yes, of course. Officers like to.
So, yeah, the the delegations are specific to this this ski, this stage of the scheme, are they?
Yeah, it's just the wording, the wording.
Andrew.
So just to just to confirm that, can I just be clear? The word, the words in principle mean here approval of approval.
Phone's to respond.
As far as I understand it, yes.
Good. Thank you very much. Can I just understand, when Cabinet were considering this, the 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 other 29 schemes, had they had a consideration of those and over time, an understanding of how we got to scheme thirty? Not necessarily.
Aware of a range of schemes, they didn't, they did not go into those schemes in any detail at all, including myself.
I can see your hand up there, Liz. Yes, go ahead.
So that goes to my next question then. So four online options, according to the Cabinet report. The results were presented in that paper and therefore are not repeated here. Sorry, details of the appraisal results of the four online options were appraised as part of the work to E T on 2nd of March 2021. So the appraisal results were presented then. And did Cabinet have have those appraisal results? Because they're not in the decision paper. That's what I'm asking.
Microphone, Peter. Microphone.
Cabinet would present with a resume of all the options.
So who was at E T? Was it officers and Cabinet members? E T on, yeah, executive team. Is that officers and Cabinet members together? No, it's just officers. So the the work was presented to officers, the details of the appraisal results were to officers, not to put the appraisal results in the decision paper. It just, it seems a strange thing to say in your decision paper that.
Can we just have a moment? I joined the council in August, so I don't know, I wasn't here in March. So can I just confer with some colleagues? As they go to exec team first, which is the officers, as you know, then on to L M T, then on to Cabinet. And as councillor McBride said, a summary of the options was provided both to exec team and to L M T on its way through to Cabinet. So it wasn't hours and hours of poring over all the details. It was a resume of the of the optioneering process, as as you would expect.
What can happen after the outline business case? If you move forward as proposed with the outline business case, would something like what can changes to the roundabout and then moving forward, see how that pans out? Because obviously, that's the key element of the scheme that's going to make traffic flow better. After then, see how it goes. See if there's a necessity for further changes with.
I think what we're deciding here is what is decided at this stage will have a, what shall we say, a fixed impact on the rest of that. But the essence of the scheme is broadly being determined at this stage.
So can I just clarify, councillor McBride? It it would be off the table, that proposal. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Any any other panel members that want to come in at this stage? Yes, Andrew.
Thank you, Chair. Just just a clarification, really. And and this was mentioned during the course of you discount a flyover gyratory or a link road only if they were more expensive.
They were taken off the table. The gyratory was far too expensive, given the chosen was, it was not the best scheme. And that part is being taken forward. And that, from my view, is sort of set in stone. What I am saying is we are absolutely prepared to look at the rest of the scheme.
To show which bits of the scheme could not be dealt with after the. No, but I I I I, I mean, I'm assuming that that those those other options were were more expensive, either in money or or in or they just didn't do. It's a perfectly simple question, but maybe it doesn't get a simple answer. Is is what is an online scheme? I I I've I've heard this mentioned several times. And I I've kind of thought this is this is a scheme that uses the. Offline schemes, therefore, are ones which use either a considerable or a little bit more extra land other than other than what's already occupied by the road. That means you've got to do something while traffic is still going backwards and forwards across the 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 carpet, as it were, and to pay for extra land as opposed to the inconvenience caused during construction while while you're having to either divert traffic or 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 restrict it.
Yes, benefits and costs of the scheme are are weighed and identified and weighed in terms of cost, environmental impact, disruption or achievement of the original objectives. To get to a third, really, it depends on the the specific circumstances, the objectives, and what the overall weighing of costs and benefits leads you to. So I wouldn't say you start with a preference.
Stephen Hanley, program manager, Major Transport Service. In terms of what Ed was just said there, I think if you look at the scheme, some of it is, in essence, kind of slightly offline. Significant change, big significant impact. What we're talking about here is utilising this existing highway. We're also widening the highway in certain parts. Some of that is off road, say Cooper Bridge. So the left slips you'll see, we're going into the focusing and utilising as much of the existing highway as possible and then winding out where we need to. Obviously taking into consideration all the various constraints. So property, businesses, infrastructure, utilities. You've got to tie those into the existing network somewhere. So where do you tie your flyover in? Do you pick up Leeds Road, Bradley Road? Do you pick up Wakefield Road? You've got to tie that in. So just do something at Bradley Road Junction. And that's the key here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Smidge?
Yeah, I've just got a question on your time. Different items in to your timeline on your Cabinet paper. So if we can agree that the Cabinet paper is the decision paper, but your presentation does not form part of your decision. So you, in your decision, you note the commitment to work with and play shape with residents and businesses. But in your next step timeline on your decision two, you've got pre-application consultation, but you don't have that specifically where you have clearly in your presentation timeline. You've, you've, you note the design team's commitment. That's very, yeah, you know, yes. Everybody can appreciate you noting the commitment. But if it's not in your timeline and, you know. Yes. Yeah. So what I'm asking is why, why the two timelines are different? Why was that not tied up as part of the decision? Thank you.
The timeframe put in the actual Cabinet report was based on our milestones. So their clear activities or, or completion together for Cabinet, we, we tried to just make clear and to manage people's expectations in terms of when that community engagement would begin. And that is very much good. Consultation will be a formal consultation, much similar to what we've recently carried out as part of that.
Yeah, I just, I just, I, I wanted to know about you because I can see that you've got formal consultation in that. Your pre-application consultation not in that timeline. And that, that was, that was a clarification on clarity of what your decision was. Thank you.
Sorry, can I just add to that then slightly? Yeah, we did adaptation was that that engagement can't meaningfully start until we've got secured funding and we know that we're progressing with the scheme. So it was just trying to manage those expectations into. Just going to say, I'm not going to repeat the question again because councillor Smidge has asked it. But one thing I do want to ask about is the engagement process and what.
Good afternoon, Richard Hollinson.
The types of engagement processes.
Good thought. And our intention is to create, is to, is to, is to create two parts of our project team. One will be a design engineering side of the team. One will be a consultation engagement side of the team to work and collaborate across that to make sure the design is evolved and to work through different design options with them. We've talked about some of those today, things like the, the crossing points, for example. Other ideas we've got about enhancing the local park unity as part of our place-based working approach. So that would go on, that would be an iterative process. We'd see how that goes. We'd also look at some of the other suggestions that have been made today and do the technical work around modelling and impacts and share those results with people. Some of that's quite detailed stuff. So we'd, we'd take the time to explain at committee meeting, for example, to help try and do that. My experience, I think that works quite well with smaller groups. So we can do that and work with local ward councillors as well as affected.
Okay, that's good to hear that you're going to engage the local residents as well in summary. So it is quite overwhelming hearing some of the technical information. So just bear with me. You had a number of options and in your professional opinion, you narrowed them down to what you thought was the best. And you narrowed it down to eight options, which you discussed in Cabinet. So when you mentioned different design up consult on.
Yeah, just to clarify my point there. Yeah, I was referring to options around Oak Road, for example, and things we've talked about with so far in that, rather than completely reopening the pros and cons are. And then look at a package for, for each of the street locations and obviously being able to move forward allows us to do that.
Thank you. You've answered my questions.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Liz.
Sorry, I've got another question. So I wanted to know for the OVC or the FBC, how you need to demonstrate linkages to other schemes in the area to assess the impact of this scheme. I'm just trying to find out if there is an overall coordinated approach for the whole of that area and where that comes in. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Yep. So a couple of things here that the case is a strategic case. I know you're aware, I'm just for the room. The strategic case requires the council to describe the context of the scheme, take into account other interdependencies such as the local plan allocations, what's going on at Calderdale, for example, and provide that strategic context that's carried out at this stage at proportional level. And that, that then comes together to form the whole of the business case. And there's several different parts to the business case process. That whole process evolves as you go along, as being already mentioned here. So by the time you get to the full business case, one would expect that strategic context to be much fuller, much richer picture of what's going on. The plan process is taking this into account and I can confirm it is. It's the same planning inspector who dealt with the Kirklees local plan is dealing with the Calderdale local plan. And we have a duty to cooperate statement with Calderdale. And we have a joint board arrangement at officer level with Calderdale for sharing this information. And we are working on a joint master planning approach. That can't be finalised yet because Calderdale's local plan is still at its examination in public. But we do expect that to conclude shortly. And once we have a few more fixed points, we'll be able to produce, you know, a much richer master plan joining with Calderdale Council. And they've signed up to that as part of their duty to cooperate and statement of common ground with Kirklees.
Okay, I think you didn't have any follow up there, did you, Liz? No, okay. Can I just, I mean, just on that point on master planning, I do, I do think that's, there might be some implications with highways in England. There with, with some of the, the road infrastructure on the, on the Bradford Road and Bradley Road side things. There's the 1500 homes that are proposed on Bradley Park. And then there's this, obviously there's, there's been some other applications recently, particularly in the Business Park, Bradley Business Park with a, with a big company going in. I think something to do with rubber, I can't, can't remember. But obviously there's issues there with, with, with the impact on, of this scheme, of this pro scheme on the overall master planning in Bradley. I know it's all at different stages at the moment. That doesn't necessarily help to be able to do that, that very sort of clear master plan thinking. But should some of that work be, be done already? Should it, or should you be thinking about that right now? Or do you think that's, that's already been done? It's not clear to me that it has. You know, to assess the overall, assess this Cooper Bridge scheme and the overall master plan for, for Bradley.
This be, whatever schemes coming forward, would it be consistent with what plans we have for Bradley and the, and the housing there? And I've been assured at all stages and including this scheme would be totally consistent with the operation and the development.
As the responsible Cabinet, Cabinet member, do, do you feel you've had enough information? Again, I'm probably dupicking questions that have been asked before. But I just want to clarify, you feel comfortable with the options that have been presented to you to be able to make the decision you have at this stage?
Clear at all stages and you've been aware of that fact and I've reflected that in my comments today. And yeah, I have reservations about that. But I do think there is a workable scheme there. And that if this part is taken back and reappraised, I think we've got the best. I think the, the scheme that as it is, is workable, whether it's the best scheme, I'm quite happy that that's reappraised, that element is reappraised.
As, as part of this process, as panel members, we were presented with that sort of high level 30 options. There was a little description of, of what it would be and why it's been discounted. And can I ask, is, is there a reason that wasn't, for example, included in the, in the Cabinet papers?
I think I'll, I'll take that one. I, I just think we present, try to, there's an awful lot of information to present. We've, we've talked about a lot here. We could have carried on, we could have presented more information. It wouldn't have fundamentally checked Cabinet members. So obviously all the opportunities were there to ask further questions and to elaborate on that. And I think that's the reason why we took that decision. And obviously it's not something we've, 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 we've have presented some of that options information and some of the consultation information and other things that have gone out. So you've seen the timelines of, of option progression since 2014, 15, I think, and over the last few years. So there's lots of opportunities where that information's been shared and talked through.
Can I just ask also about the LTN 120? So I did, I did Google it this morning to get a little bit more information. And, and I do appreciate it is guidance, having looked at its guidance for sort of what we would expect would be like the highest standard of, of good quality sort of cycling schemes and all the rest of it. I haven't looked at the whole thing, but that's, that's what I understand it to be. Now, in terms of any sort of WICA schemes, would, would there be an expectation from WICA?
That, that's, that's. Come on, yeah. Absolutely. That is where we'd like to be. You know, that's the starting point. You know, you look at the standards, you look at the, you know, two-way cycle route, three metres or, or more. A cycling scheme, first of all, it's a, a transportation scheme that's considering all users on that network. So, you know, we have to start with those standards like we do with, similarly with highway design standards for, for lane widths, footpath widths. You end up with a scheme that we, we worked through as, as, as officers to work up in terms of costs, implications on land take, utilities, to come up with what we believe is the optimum scheme, balancing out all those different needs and demands. So in terms of what's been proposed on the current scheme, there's, there's cycle lanes that, that meet those standards. These footpaths that meet those standards. So we have to look at that across the range. And in, in occasions, there may well be a redesign across the piece. So that's where we'd like to be. But obviously we have to take into consideration all constraints that, that are, you know, focusing on that scheme. Now, we could, for example, not widen the road. We could take out a traffic lane, put in two-way segregated cycle lanes. But what impact would that have on highway network? Quite considerable impact. So cyclists have got to be able to use it, be able to navigate the junctions safely. So we have to take all those different needs and, and users into account and then ultimately. Thank you.
If I might add, councillor, pause a bit of a second because I think your question was aimed at how the process might go with the combined authority. So we've, 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 in our response to the questions, I think it's 1.4, we've put in there that cost assessments, which were referred authority. I think it's fair to say the combined authority, like everybody else, is still feeling the way forward with LTM 120. We're obviously trying very hard to reach those standards. There's no requirement to them 100%. And we, we are aware of schemes being approved that, that don't. But it's fair, but also fair to say that the appraisal process of the outline business case, the combined authority will care for, very carefully look at this consideration. And they have the ability to attach conditions, something that can be looked at further. I think our, our current sort of information suggests we've got a reasonable prospect of, of passing through some of those tests. So, I mean, as to now, if we submitted a business case, would it get through on those tests? I think it would with conditions, if I was sort of guessing the outcome of the process. But yeah. And I suppose to add that obviously that is subject to.
And just, just finally, I mean, you, you've made this point before, but I'm just sort of, just, just going to say it again. In, in this Cabinet summary paper, in the presentation, it said that, you know, we'll keep listening, responding to residents' concerns and the decision members have been asked to make allow this to be the case. The council will work with local resident design in and around Oak Road. Again, that suggests mitigations on Oak Road. But we're saying as, as the outline business case progresses, that potentially there could be an option here where Oak Road could be removed from the scheme. But I, I just want to clarify on at the, at this stage.
As far as I understand it, what we're saying is everything, Leeds Road itself is set in stone. But this element is subject to total appraisal and we will be guided by the outcome of that. And this has been the major thing I've always had reservations.
And can the officers confirm that as well?
Yeah. So essentially it, it is both. So as part of the detailed design, we would look at the costs and benefits of that right turn that I mentioned. If you have the, if you ban the right turn and you move traffic on to Oak Road, what does that generate in terms of transport benefits and what does it do in terms of disbenefits? And that would take place at the full business case stage. So in that sense, Oak Road in or out is on the table. The, the mitigation is then almost like a level below. In a world, a theoretical world at this stage, where Oak Road is one way, we would want to work with the community to get exactly in or not.
So just to confirm, it's basically is Oak Road in or out? It's not any other options at all? It would just be that?
That's one of the, that's what I think that's, as you've heard, that is, I think, a critical refinement that needs to be resolved. But we're not going back to flyovers and all the, all the other things. It's sort of narrowing in now on the critical issues. And as you've heard, that is probably the critical one.
Homewood and also former councillor Smith have raised the issue of the HGVs that are going to be diverted away from Oak Road. So they're going to have to go presumably up Leeds Road potentially through other, other side roads and estates. Has there been any impact assessment done on that? Because obviously presumably you need to contact other bodies and authorities to get deciding on this. I'd want to know really the answer to that. And would you agree that that should really be information you consider before making a final decision on it?
It's the basis, the major basis or one of them, which I have great reservations about, that that issue will be fully addressed. That we look at the impact of that. Officers will have their own comments.
Yeah. So the, the suggestion around what would happen around, how could you mitigate the impact on Oak Road? If you, if you did go down that route, such as an HGV ban, that's something that's been raised relatively recently. So the full detailed assessment hasn't been done. We've, we've referenced that. But you're absolutely right. When I talk about the decisions yet to come and for the final business case was ever approved.
Thank you. Can I just ask as well, on the outline business case, as it kind of is locking us into a bit of a narrow field here, there's not going to be much latitude to change away from the, the, the scheme that's been outlined. Can I ask, has the proposal by councillor Bolt, which was during construction, was that one of the considerations, alternative considerations that the council considered? I appreciate you might not be able to answer that. But if, if it was, or was a former councillor Smith's suggestion about.
Councillor Smith has not discussed this with me. I've not seen anything. The first I've heard of it is today, officers comment it, ransome it.
Yeah, just in relation to the offline roundabout, if you like, at the minute. So as I mentioned in the presentation, the roundabout is already offline. So it's, it's not replacing the existing roundabout. We are already taking land to the north. That is a registered park and garden, the Kirklees estate. That's who the land belongs to. So we have to balance the land we take with heritage impacts and, and the like. So we, we've tried to do that with the design we've got. I think historically we have, you know, yourself, I think, I think it was, it was you that mentioned there were back then. There were options that looked at larger roundabouts in that location. And option one in the list that we gave the panel is probably the best example of that. Although sitting behind that, there were iterations, if you like, before we arrived at that design.
All right. If key questions, and thank you to everybody who's, who's taken part in this. Now, the next stage is final panel clarification. So if any. So if any panel members have any outstanding questions regarding the information that's been presented to us, you can ask those final sort of clarifications or questions now? No? Okay, so then the next stage is we're going to go as a panel into deliberation in private. Not sure how long it will take. And then we'll, we'll come out and provide our, our rec, whatever it is, we're going to come out and say at an appropriate time. So maybe we'll see you, maybe we won't else. So we'll maybe see you later.
Thank you everybody who's joined us again at the Economy and Neighbourhood scrutiny panel. We've been here for a while today, so thank you everybody for sticking with us. The panel went away to deliberate and we've now come back and I'll read out what's happened in terms of those deliberations. So the Economy and Neighbourhoods panel has considered a calling review request of the decision made by Cabinet on 12th of October 2021 in respect of A62 Cooper Bridge corridor improvement scheme. The panel has focused the review on the areas of relevant considerations, clarity and options considered. The panel heard from all parties both in person and in writing, evaluated relevant points raised in the calling request form and weighed up evidence in respect of the decision. The panel also considered all relevant background information to assist in determining the rationale behind the decision and if it was made in accordance with the council's decision making principles of relevant considerations, clarity and options considered. The panel wants to thank everyone for taking the time to give evidence and this has assisted the panel in reviewing the decision. So thank you everybody who took time to do that today. The panel appreciates that this is an emotive issue for those affected but has focused on the facts informing the decision made by Cabinet. The recommendation of the panel is to refer the matter back to the Cabinet with recommendations for amendment and also with some additional learning points for Cabinet to consider. So I'll go through those points now. So on relevant consideration, firstly there's a learning point. Answers to the technical questions were provided today and these were questions that were posed by some of those who attended Cabinet. But the panel feel these should have been answered at Cabinet prior to the decision being taken. So that's a learning point we'd like you to take back. The recommendation under relevant consideration is that the scheme needs to demonstrate clearly within this strategy how it fits with the master plan and the wider issues for Bradless. Cabinet need to consider that point. On clarity, the panel recognises the scheme has been an evolving process over many years and many areas have been addressed in informal processes and meetings. But some areas weren't made clear in the formal report before Cabinet. Learning point, in future reports are drafted using clear and simple language. A recommendation, delegations and languages within the report need to be clearer and reference that they relate specifically to an outlined business case as stated today. Officers' recommendations need to be clearer in the cabinet paper that they were deciding on the OBC, the outlined business case, and clarify the full business case will be returned to Cabinet. On the third point, options, recommendation that a high level summary or short narrative of the 30 options should be included within the cabinet report for Cabinet to consider. This wasn't done initially. Another recommendation, more clarity and awareness is required on the stages and process of developing both the outlined business case and full business case. We also recognise councillor McBride's commitment to reappraise the options for the scheme as well. Learning point as well, clearer language needs to be used to help people to understand the process ongoing. So that's for the public and for the cabinets, the clear what the decision is. And more generally, so not on those three points but more generally, the panel expects future reports to be submitted to the Economy and Neighbourhoods panel on a regular basis to include reference to work on how modal shift and air quality measures can be taken into account as part of the transport scheme. And also there should be more around the continuing dialogue that the council will undertake with local residents and on the community engagement processes. And more generally, the scheme should be coming back to scrutiny as well. And particularly pre-decision scrutiny is important. So those are the key points that we've made. Hope that's clear to everybody. If anyone needs any clarification, officers and cabinet owners need clarification. I'm sure we can provide that.
Can you just make a clarification?
Yes, councillor Smigge.
When you said about...
Can you put your microphone next to you so we can hear?
Yeah, reappraise councillor McBride's commitment, we recognise councillor McBride's commitment to reappraise contentious areas of the scheme. I think you mentioned options, I think councillor McBride's looking a little bit puzzled as to what we meant. It was councillor McBride's commitment to reappraise contentious areas of the scheme. Yeah, that's what we recognise, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that, apologies about that. And that, those are the points that we've made as a panel that we've come together on. So hopefully that's all very clear. Like I say, if there's anything else that needs clarifying, you know, we've got our governance officers here and myself which we can help to clarify, thanks for that Liz. And that's it, so thank you everybody for joining us today. Good night and see you soon, okay, thank you.